The town assisted with a, with an adjustment to the zoning as well a few years back.
Changes in line with it.
Yeah, right.
So that's why it kind of helps delineate the light industrial to retail a little better? To make it a little more developable in terms of the retail parcel?
Right. So Gateway, or John Cofflin as we all know him as, is, basically he wants to break out 406, which is where Olympic is now, and essentially sell that property to whoever Olympic is, and then remove that from his owners. And then the second parcel will remain pretty much what's been going on now for what seems like ten years. The for sale sign will still stay there for lot A, as we're calling it, the five point seven acres. And he's still out there trying to find a buyer that will either purchase the property and develop it themselves, or work through John under, you know, some sort of a lease to do something in there within the Business Light Industrial District. And, I mean, that sign's been out there, I mean, I've been with Meridian fifteen years. This project's a four, six, nine, seven, we're up to fifty-eight hundred, so this thing's been hanging around a long time. And that's, that's really, I mean, it's a, you know, the only thing I will point out to you is that the building itself is, in terms of front setback, is, is in non-conformance. John probably wouldn't want me to mention that, but unless it's true.
We're totally aware of it.
We know that.
It predates something.
We went around and around.
No, no secrets here, and, you know, the majority of the lot, of course, is, is a wetland.
And also has some topographical issues too.
Right.
So you're conforming the lot lines to the zoning line?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
But you're still, the lot with the building will still have frontage on, will have frontage on both?
They've all got the proper frontage, they've all got the proper lot area, and there's not much we can do in regards to the existing condition of the front setback.
Has everybody read Kirk's analysis? Or do you want me to?
No.
Refresh, I just want to ask quickly before we vote, opinion from Larry or Kirk? Anything else to add?
Yeah, I looked at it in terms of the O and R requirements, I mean, it has the legal required frontage on that, on a public road that's adequate for, you know, for buildings in the area. I mean, the plan was obligated to approve.
Larry, you agree?
I agree with what was said, I haven't seen the plan or studied it at all.
There's a paper copy of it.
I'm not gonna make any decisions right now.
You know, I mean, this is, this is, I'm not pushing anybody to do anything, if you feel like you need time to look at it, by all means. Not that it's wrong with our decision, but Olympic's interested in buying the property? You know, I talked to Charlie about Charlie Ware briefly, because just to get, apparently whoever Olympic is, they are interested in purchasing, and apparently they've approached John about that. And that's sort of what drove this as well, I think John just assumed removed it from his holdings as well, so.
Sure.
And I, you know, I did the plan check, I couldn't tell what they were doing in there.
Is anybody who owns the land who are the former owners for sports, sports present?
There's a lot of land on the way.
Who's that, Johnny?
John, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that he's the one building that, Forest Ridge is, yeah.
Forest Ridge, and then UPS and yogurt.
Can I ask just a sec, you were just saying that the, that the lot line conforms to the zoning line? I thought the lot line was the one that goes up over and down, but the zoning line doesn't it?
Bisection.
The new, the new zoning line?
Is this the new? Yeah.
That's the thing we straightened.
Business Light Industrial.
Yeah, exactly.
Did you say it only, the only thing that kind of overlaps there is that back triangle?
Yeah, that, that triangle.
Which you mentioned in the back.
Oh, okay, yeah, right.
Which is what?
Yeah, right.
That doesn't really, this lot.
I mean, it doesn't have to conform with the town.
Right.
All right, any other questions? Is this the only one we're signing?
Oh, there's actually two.
That's what I thought. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the port line.
Second?
Second by Steve. You want to let this stop?
You seconded second.
Motion by Clint Pierce, second by Steve Castillo. Are those in favor?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. You want to take, take Annie with you, or you want to come?
Sure.
You want to see Kirk later? It's up to you.
Any way you want to handle it, Kirk?
I guess we'll probably wait till after meeting to sign it, or make sure they sign all those copies.
Okay, well, okay.
And then I can come by tomorrow.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, we want to do that, we'll move along, because the urgency here is really not present.
Yeah, this is not urgent.
Sometimes people have incredible urgency.
Yeah.
They want to record it tomorrow, you know?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good night.
Yep.
Thanks for helping.
All right, good second. Second order of business, some of these are, just so there's a kind of a disclaimer here, these are discussions that I, as chairman, can cut off because they're informal, in the sense that we need moving along in the agenda, so, since they are informal and these will be coming back in some form or another, so, you know, this is not a formal hearing, but we do want to hear, you know, some plans and concepts that people have, and that will help direct what we do next in terms of trying to help you out, so. And our grandness here is one, our review consultant, so. First one is, done this before, and I think now we know the, that we'll log it supplies on Sunday. So, it's a cell tower expansion again, without changing the pad down below, or any of the cabinets, or any of the height of the tower up on Prospect Hill.
Sure.
Please state your name, or your affiliation.
Sure. Jeffrey Badore, and I work with Crown Castle. We own the cell tower.
Can you spell that, or you already know?
Crown, oh, I'm sorry, could you spell the name? Sure.
Or Abicard.
V A D, yeah, V A D O R A.
Just for the minutes, yeah?
Yep. Yep, so we, the cell tower in part of the building, we own it, it's a hundred and eighty foot cell tower, Sprint is an existing carrier army tower, they have existing three antennas, and they want to add three more antennas to the same elevation, so the tower's a hundred and eighty feet, Sprint's at a hundred and twenty, and they're gonna add three antennas to each side. And they're also gonna add a big fiber cable that runs up the tower.
Replacing or adding?
They're adding three antennas, yeah.
Right.
Was the, the three that are there, who's being replaced?
No.
So it's just the three additional.
Just adding the three additional.
You know, I'd have a plan for anybody who needs to look at it.
And as people know, they have to get authorization from the selectmen? Because I guess we have an agreement with Crown Castle, right?
Correct.
A lease agreement?
Yes, we do.
Does this increase the rental payments of the town?
No.
No?
It's because they're, they're existing, it was a new carrier, and there was revenue share involved, and there's language in the lease of revenue share.
It's interesting question.
Is it town property?
It's town property. Town property.
You own the town?
We own the town, correct.
And they would also have to obtain a building permit, you know, structural.
So similar to, you know, just here to say that we don't need any further?
The blessing, right?
Right.
Yeah, I guess it's directed, have you approached the board of selectmen or the town administrator yet? I was talking to Sarah, but you may want to, you need authorization from the board of selectmen, but I guess the planning board will make its recommendation, and then the board of selectmen will take that. Right, and who signs?
Well, I think, I think we make a determination to further review of what the planning board is in accordance, I don't really think it's a recommendation.
Right.
Well, I think they're, they're looking for.
I mean, we can make.
It falls, it falls within, you know, the two thousand, the middle class tax relief act?
Right.
In that section.
Yeah.
Rather than not, in some cases it may not return.
Yeah, board of selectmen, we just want to know that it's not, doesn't require modification.
Yeah, right.
All right, does anybody have any disagreements with that?
Do you have a depiction of the before and after? Just because you're adding towers, you're not replacing them, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we're, the antennas actually.
Antennas, I meant.
I don't know if anybody else here would want one.
Yeah, we have smaller ones in our package.
Yeah, yeah, these are a little better.
And those, those would be in, these would be in exhibits B, B three?
So on sheet eight two here shows the elevation of the tower. This is a hundred and eighty foot tower, this Sprint at one twenty.
Where's AT and T? Is that on here?
Is AT and T, well, it's Sprint where the application is on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you're looking at a plan view, so if you're looking down on the tower, this top depiction here shows existing, so you've got one antenna, two antennas, three antennas, so you have two, three. So, and if you go down to the bottom here, Sprint's adding the one, two, and three antenna. And they are adding, I mentioned, they are adding, are used, they're not antennas, they're small, they sit behind the antenna, they're like an amplifier, but those sitting back, so they're not an antenna, but, you know, so that's the difference, before and after. So each of those antenna rods will take one additional current antenna. Yep.
Okay, yeah, the rods don't change, they just add to them.
Correct, they just place an antenna.
Okay. It's pretty clear cut.
Yeah.
The good thing about, in this town, is that, you know, both of our towers are pretty good.
Yeah.
At least they're fine. So that one's there, I'm getting this lane out of the way in this one.
Yeah.
So they really don't obscure anybody's view. All right, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, my only question is, I think Kirk, you were sent, I guess we had to get a consent signed.
Yeah, she already submitted that to the, to the town, right?
Yeah, she did, she sent me a copy of it, so, so who signed? Does the selectmen sign it?
My understanding is the board of selectmen authorize the changes to the tower on town owned property, it's just because it's town owned property.
Right, and so, I mean, after this meeting, how does that happen?
You would contact the town administrator's office.
Okay, tell them we met with?
Yeah, tell them that you have met with the planning board.
Kirk will file up with an email.
Okay.
You just get on their agenda, and it's pretty straightforward.
Excellent.
Unless there are other issues that deal with, outside of our perjury lease issues or other issues, which I, you know, we'd have nothing to do with us.
Yeah, I think they would be dealing with the lease, pretty much, the lease on the property.
Right. Well, Kirk, the, the middle class, middle class tax relief act says we must grant approval, so shouldn't we be voting on approval?
I was going to take a vote.
Okay, all right, okay, so.
Want to make a motion?
I will, we approve the alteration to the tower in compliance with the two thousand fourteen middle class tax relief act.
Second.
Well, make sure in the, in the motion you put which tower? Okay. Crown Castle and Prospect Hill, okay. Second, you already seconded, Steve seconded, all of them there?
All right.
That's another. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Do you want me to take one?
You're a key one.
I think it works.
You have one, right?
Actually.
You can keep my one.
Yeah, it would be good to have a couple of those.
You can keep it, thank you.
Yeah, I would like the eleven by sevens, please.
Does anybody else see another one? Yeah, anybody else?
Sure, if you can, I know.
Okay.
Keep that one.
Okay.
Can I give one to Ken?
Thanks very much.
Give one to Ken, please, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, can we give one, have you already given one to the building inspector, or can we give him one of those?
You can, I mean, we'll submit everything to him at some point, but if he wants to see it now, that's gonna be.
Okay, that's fine.
That's gonna be the plan. Do another one?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Next time, I'll have to print about an infinite number of frames. And you heard my?
Shortsuit?
Well, that was partly.
I've got an extra six minutes.
You know which one I meant. Other than zoning, it does mention that these kinds of projects are different, certainly the types of projects that we need to discuss.
Sure, I agree.
And we can continue that, and I'll say that upfront, that one or two members with, you know, whatever comes out of here, we can continue the discussion, maybe with, you know, like we have meetings during the day, maybe with Larry, or, you know, we can't have two planning board members, no more, one, but we can continue during the day.
Okay.
Not just relegated to this kind of forum.
Sure, okay. Okay, great. For the record, John Smolak and Smolak and Bondry, representing the owner of the property, which is Cashman v. Cabot, with baseball Christiansen of Christiansen Searching Project Engineer. I just wanted to give you some brief history about this.
And also, there's some new members who might not be, might not be as oriented, this property kind of, because it's not, it's kind of secluded in the woods, and it's bordered by, you know, old ancient ways of big ore.
Right.
So the plans are covered, the plans have easements and things that don't even really exist, so we're really talking about what exists and what can be built off of, you know?
Right. And, well, just by way of background, I mean, with reference to that plan, I mean, Cashman v. Cabot bought, bought four parcels back around six or seven years ago.
That's all set up.
That was a total of about seventy-six acres.
Right, right.
And one of those, and I guess if I could just outline those parcels.
Did you introduce who you are for the minutes?
Yeah, yes, I did.
You already did, okay.
Yes, I did, yeah. And just quickly, this is the parcel of concern, which is forty-four Ox pasture, which is thirty-three, approximately thirty-three acres. This is an adjacent parcel owned by them as well, by the, by the current owner, Cashman Cabot, which is about nine and a half acres, both in the outline district. There's an additional thirty acre parcel and a one acre parcel, all straddled along Vinton's Lane, which is a former right of way that was discontinued back in eighteen seventy-two.
It's a road with a couple houses on it.
And what's, what's the name of this road again?
This is West Ox pasture.
Right, okay.
And that's also dirt.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there are about a dozen houses off of it.
Right, up to a certain point, yeah.
Right, right.
It's, it's off of Weathersville Street?
Yes.
It's dirt the entire way, right?
Yes.
And it's not an accepted.
Not accepted.
It's not an accepted town road.
For that reason, we didn't do the ANR a couple years ago.
But that's all, but it does have utilities, and it does have houses on it, and it has been developed for years.
Well, well, West Ox pasture, in town meeting back in nineteen fifty and nineteen fifty-four, accepted first thirteen hundred feet off of Weathersville, which is the other, which is on this side.
Larry, you're familiar with this road, right?
Yeah, West Ox pasture, I thought it was about twelve hundred, like, hundred, hundred feet.
And right here is one, just to get your, your bearings here, but, but basically, we had come in last year looking for an ANR endorsement for, for a house that's an existing house.
It's just, it's thirteen, actually, a little, you know, last year.
Yeah, yeah, for, for an existing house off of, with frontage off of, of West Ox pasture. As a result of discussions, this area of West Ox pasture was approved, actually wasn't approved last year, and town council had made some comments, you know, in terms of adequacy.
Which kind of bore that out, they kind of supported us in that way.
Yeah, right, right.
And that letter is in your package?
Where was the existing house?
The existing house is located right in this area.
Oh, in the central parcel?
Yeah, the central parcel, that's correct. And so.
Gotcha, okay. And this.
This one.
Gotcha, so this is.
And then there's, as, as you know, there's an existing forty B project that was approved a number of years ago, that was partially commercial, partially residential, it was really a mishmash.
But that part is residential.
That part is residential in this area. It comes, starts off at Turb Cotton Memorial, right off of Route one.
Right.
Then it branches off to, I forget, this.
Spencer Knowles.
Spencer Knowles, then, then Arthur Gordon Drive. And this whole roadway was accepted by town meeting as a public way. And, I'm sorry, this is so small, but, in addition, there was an access point left from the end of Arthur Gordon Drive to forty-four West Ox pasture.
I never knew that.
Yeah, for, for, well, actually, there were several access points.
Off of Arthur Gordon, right?
Right. Which is about fifty-three feet in width.
Sorry to interrupt, there was one here.
Spencer Knowles.
Two, Wild Pasture, which we approved the connection, so that, that's now a roadway.
And it's wired here, too.
Spencer Knowles, that's the forty B, part of the forty B development.
Right, right.
And this is Wild Pasture here, and there was a.
Even though that's blocked off still, but it's.
Provision was made by the ZBA for a connection, and now there is a road that connects those two.
It's open?
It's not open, it, the plan is, it will be open when this is approved, but when Wild Pastures is approved by the town.
Oh, I see, when that's accepted by the town, then there's a pasture of Weathersville.
Right.
That's just a copy of the, of the approved forty B.
Approved forty B with that extension.
Right. I know, it's, I mean, it's built.
Yeah, it's built.
It's built?
But, but I think it's blocked, this one is blocked off, I believe, I don't think you can drive through there now.
No, but off of Arthur Gordon, this isn't built, right?
No.
Right, and we know that, yeah.
Right, this, this little slab is owned by the town.
So the bottom line is, you're trying to look, you're trying to get to the point where you can go through the OSRD process, or regular subdivision process?
Correct, the OSRD process. We figured that, I mean, although there's a possibility that we can run down the West Ox pasture, town council had some questions about the validity of West Ox pasture as a public way, even if it's accepted at town meeting, so, but there are already a dozen.
It would have to go back, you know, it'd have to be not only approved to go and go back, which is time consuming, to town meeting after it's approved.
Yeah, I mean, town meeting had appropriated, back in two thousand and one, they appropriated nine thousand dollars to study the engineering feasibility, and came up with a number of three hundred thousand dollars to upgrade it.
When was that?
That was probably in oh five, that, actually, four oh five. And then in two thousand and five, town meeting, because.
I already remember that.
They wanted to spend funds, there was fifty thousand dollars was suggested just to repave.
Got voted down.
And it got voted down.
Yeah, just for some background, I don't know if everyone knows or remembers, but the people who lived along there had, had asked the town, I think, a couple of times, maybe more than a couple, to, to pay that portion of the road, and the town.
But it just couldn't, it just couldn't be paid, I mean, it had, you know.
Couldn't be what?
It couldn't really be paid until it was approved, you know? They just wanted it paid, because it was such a hard job in the winter.
Well, I think, I think they wanted it improved and paved, you know?
Right, but it was kind of.
But fifty thousand wouldn't have done it.
No, and so, I don't know, they put water up it, which was kind of right, Larry, but that's about all they did, right?
Yeah, no drainage work, no paving.
They just put water up it for the people, I mean, that was kind of elite, the people didn't even have town water, so.
That wasn't water part of that subdivision?
There were Formay lots, I believe, right? All those, those lots were Formay, so it wasn't developed.
On the Concombs.
Well, that's what I believe, so it wasn't developed as a subdivision, which means there was no, that's a weakness in the Formay process.
Right, because it started, I remember how it crept up.
There was no developer to build a road, like you have in a typical subdivision, you know?
That's why those Formays kind of.
That's why, why, why they should change Formays and eliminate them, basically.
Yeah, because it only got to that point, it stopped.
This is what you end up with.
So what, how does that apply, so, you have, you have it coming off West Ox in your council, right?
Yeah, that's, well, actually.
You have your build outs coming off there. I mean, I don't think, I mean.
What are you talking about, single family homes?
What, what?
That's an OSRD.
What advantage is it to you to come through a commercial and go and use that?
Well, it's residential, it's the, it's going through the residence.
Oh, that's right, Arthur Gordon, that's right.
Yeah, so it's, it's actually part of the.
So that could be.
Existing right here.
But, so, where's it coming off?
Arthur Gordon is right here.
So they want to come down.
And this is the power source area, so if we're looking at.
Oh, yeah, is that gonna screw it up with this one?
So this is Arthur Gordon.
Oh, these parcels?
That's further down, it's, it's right here.
So you're coming off the, the Route one, the Route one end of West Ox pasture.
Well, what have the consultants said? Besides just drawing a bunch of lots? And anybody can draw, draw a road across these wetlands where the colors are.
Okay, so, I'm looking at it wrong, so this is.
Not necessarily, no, I wouldn't say.
Well, no, but, no, this kind of thing we've seen, you know, but, it, it makes sense, I mean, it's a nice piece of property.
Yeah, and zone residential, and you have to get access to get some, somewhere.
Right.
So the purpose of being here is to get your opinions, is to, feasibility to do it.
Was there anything in the packet that, that you could use for calculations, to assess the calculations?
Well, we didn't, we didn't do that, the calculations showed that with the land available, you can get eighteen lots from it.
Okay.
By the calculations.
Right, okay.
By, by.
The yield plan?
Yeah, by a yield plan, it's fourteen lots.
It's just as a part of.
That makes more sense in terms, you have to, you know, with drainage and replication.
It's a loss of the two, right?
And, and wouldn't you have to replicate?
Yeah, it'd be fourteen lots.
Wouldn't you have to replicate here, too?
You would.
Would this kind of cross?
Yeah, you'd have a cross, you'd have a couple thousand square feet.
Which is allowed.
More or less.
They still would ask.
Oh, absolutely.
But you, there's room there.
There's plenty of room to replicate.
What's the percentage of open space?
It's probably over fifty percent, just.
Well, it has to be over fifty percent, right?
Yeah, but let me just show you, give you a visual sample.
Did you introduce who you are?
I did, and I gave him a card as well, Philip Christiansen, John introduced him.
Thank you.
But this is all open space, all that hatch area.
How much of that is all wetlands?
I don't know, percentage offhand, but...
Most of it.
Maybe, you know...
Sixty-five percent.
No, I'd, down around forty-five percent.
Use that formula to divide along the, the road.
Did you look into Vinton's Lane? That's a private way by, is that still owned by other owners, the whole lane?
Well...
And we know some people, the people live up there.
Yeah, I mean, the access from all these parcels is probably one of the more complicated things I've ever dealt with, because...
And you've dealt with a lot.
There's, uh, I mean, it's, I'm sorry.
I just, did they want the yield plan as well?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, there's a yield plan, which you would have to connect through to Vinton's Lane to provide frontage.
Right.
And then create, now, the owner owns both sides of Vinton's Lane.
Have an owner.
Sure, get frontage. So he can widen Vinton's Lane as necessary to accommodate his subdivision all the way.
So is this, on this map, is that because he owns this, that you're putting the road there?
Owns both sides.
And what is he, what is, there, is this developable?
Yes, that's commercial.
And that's, that's commercial?
That's commercial, he's on that side, yeah. That's this parcel here.
May I ask how big these lots are?
Yeah, the parcel that we're talking about for, uh, this OSRD is, is thirty-four acres.
He's pointing to the...
The proposed lots.
All those, all the smaller lots.
Yeah.
The lot sizes.
About those.
On the yield plan, or?
Yeah, they're approximately two acres, these, these lots are substantially smaller, they might be about three-quarters of an acre.
Meaning the, the outline district?
Right, this, this one needs the outline.
As opposed to this one is...
This is very confusing.
It is.
Um, this is your conventional yield plan.
Right.
Okay, this is the...
I'm gonna write that down. This is convent yield plan, right?
I don't know if everyone understands that, I didn't understand.
Well, I can, you can just look at it, then you understand.
Right.
Look at the lot.
I looked at it, and I didn't get it.
Yeah, this is a conventional, so.
Yeah, that's when you have lots that are buildable only in the front, and the rest are wetlands, and you intermittent stream in the back.
Yeah, by the way, we did go to conservation, we had an ORAD issued on this, seven years ago. Not too, it's still in effect.
Yeah, it is.
We, we did it twice, we did it once, maybe two thousand and five, and that one expired.
For the people who are not familiar with that, and I used to be on ConCon, but they always get, it's funny what ORAD is.
An applicant files, uh, in a, called an ANRAD, an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation. So what they do is, and we did it on this property, you go out and you locate where all the wetlands are, put it on the plan, and then go to conservation and have conservation determine whether or not the wetlands you show are correct. And if, if it is, then they issue an ORAD, which is an order of resource area determination.
Which kind of certifies the wetlands?
So, you know, we had a plan like this, that's got all of the wetlands flagged, the whole series of wetlands flags throughout it. And then conservation confirmed, yes, this is the heat it, we identified intermittent streams as well as the boarding vegetative wetland. And, you know, when the agent goes out and might move this flag from here to here, or vice versa, and then...
And now he can really use the aerial...
Sure.
So that was your first stop, conservation commission?
Yes, because otherwise...
So he don't know what you got?
Sorry. And then we've also done soil tests on the property, because we will have to do more, but just to get some idea, can it perk? And if we can perk, the water tables around three or four feet.
I don't know if you know, but approving OSRDs, I think this is right in our bylaw, we go through a validation process before that each of the lots do essentially approve that they can perk.
Right.
And Larry just had it for us.
Right. But we've been out there with the board of health.
Water level is only three or four feet, that means there'll be, there'll be septic along the above-ground system, right?
Yeah, that tends to happen these days with all systems, so what you try to do is, what you try to do is, you know, set the house on a higher portion of the lot, have the, the system on the lower portion where it's raised and it's not a big lump, but, that's...
They try to minimize any retention, retaining walls, or...
Yeah.
If you look up on Hillside Ave, you know, some of the ones in the back?
Yeah.
Just leave them. Well, that back, well, 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 in firm road, is that what's it?
Uh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
When they get down, those lots are all in the front, septic's in the back.
Retaining walls.
Retaining walls.
Yeah.
They go to those wetlands in the, in the Brooklyn.
You're gonna, the road's gonna be paved to, um, the forty-B, uh, what is it, Arthur Gordon cul-de-sac? Are you gonna improve, pave, or do anything to the road going to Weathersfield Street, Vinton's Lane?
Or, or West Ox pasture, for that matter. If, if, if we were to go ahead, what we would do is...
Yeah, I meant West Ox, yeah.
Extend from Arthur Gordon to here with a paved way
Okay.
in front of the existing house here to this point.
Okay.
And then a new cul-de-sac.
Approximately to which point?
Here, to about this point.
And you're gonna continue to your cul-de-sac?
And then the cul-de-sac would come down to Vinton's.
Yeah.
Right about here.
To bring a road length up? From Route One up Vinton's Lane, uh, to this area is about fifty-five hundred feet. So when you take, uh, road cost about five hundred, six hundred, probably about five hundred bucks a foot.
That's cheap.
That's over three million dollars, so it's not feasible for us to bring a road probably...
What even this?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I don't, I said Vinton's Lane, I meant West Ox.
Yeah, oh, West Ox.
So, in other words...
And the fire department's gonna weigh in on this.
Uh, do you have any plans for improving the road from this point to Weathersfield Street, right?
We do not.
Okay.
Because of the cost, just the cost that they have here.
I mean...
The fire department, they won't.
Well, you know, I think that there, there are issues about cul-de-sacs here.
Yeah, how long, how long is it to the cul-de-sac?
About thirteen hundred feet.
From where?
From, from West Ox pasture to the end of the cul-de-sac.
What's the limit usually, five hundred, five hundred?
Well, I mean...
Except in OSRDs, you can...
The cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac goes from here, uh, as you proposed it here, all the way to Route One, that's how I, I would measure.
For...
Well, I think that's an issue we gotta consider.
Well, no, it would at least go from Arthur Gordon.
At least goes from this, the, the cul-de-sac in Arthur Gordon. It at least does that, but I'm saying, why doesn't it go all the way to Route One, because, in other words...
Well, mainly because it, it, you could stop it at Spencer Knowles if that's connected through to Wild Pastures.
I mean, why can't it just stop at West Ox pasture?
Okay, right, all right, so this, yeah, all right, well...
Well...
It's not connected now.
It's not connected, yeah, but I mean, by the time this gets going, it will.
Larry's point is, is, is a valid one, I think the cul-de-sac would run from here all the way to, uh, the intersection of the two forty-B roads, Spencer Knowles and Arthur Gordon. So how long is that?
Well, I don't know.
It's obviously forty-five hundred meters.
It's really long.
But why doesn't the cul-de-sac start at West Ox pasture?
That's what I would say. That's where the road is.
Because, because if something happens and there's a blockage, you know, a truck, truck, a trailer truck turns over at that point, at the intersection of, of Arthur Knowles and, and, uh, West Ox, uh, then that's how far, uh, emergency, uh, personnel would have to travel to get to the end of this point.
They would, they would commit to Weathersfield.
Well, that's another, but that's an unimproved road, how good is that road? I mean, these are things...
He could use it to get to the houses everywhere.
Well, these, these, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying what my opinion is, I'm just saying these are issues we need to think about.
If you're taking a ladder truck down, a paved road versus that, which one do you do?
The twelve or thirteen hundred foot?
No, that was, Larry, we're talking about the length of this cul-de-sac.
No, no, I know, where is the end of West Ox pasture as far as that thirteen hundred foot goes?
I, I think, right where you're thinking.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think it's just these two A R lots.
The two A R lots, yeah, right.
So all your plans that you gave us still have the same entrance off of West Ox?
Yes.
Sorry.
Unimproved at that point.
And you also, and you all have, now, the reason why you're paving is so you can access those other two lots that you were denied?
Well, it's, it's actually just one lot.
One lot that you...
We're just doing one of the houses.
So that's so you can access those, okay.
That's just a typo.
Yeah, no, I see what they're doing, I'm just...
But that also presents...
I'm just saying we have to think about it.
Yeah, well, and you know that, because again, you're accessing lots that end without a cul-de-sac or any term. Well, you know that, I mean, you guys own, you guys, I mean, you guys, so. What I would ask is, Chairman, what, what do you want from us? Do you wanna meet with, you wanna get ConCon or the billiard, you wanna have another, like a meeting with the planner and get some other members of town boards here? And with Larry, when Larry can have a little more, you know...
Yeah, I, I think that might help to have a, a small, maybe a small group or a subcommittee, or perhaps with Kirk and the family and the fire department, and, and to have discussions about what they envision in terms of access, in terms of adequacy.
And certainly Cliff, who has, and Cliff or Gene, who have been here for how many OSRD?
Oh.
Quite a few. Well, right, right from the, right from the conception of them.
Right.
You guys, and so, and so, you know, I, I would suggest that, and then, and even, the fire chief is on vacation, but I mean, at some, you know, there's some issues here.
No, well, the...
We can, we can go through a number of questions, but you guys are professionals, and I think you can get the sense of it.
There's a big issue with the open space, I, I mean, your answers have not even come close to satisfying me, your compliance with bylaw.
Well, yeah.
But it looks like, I think Kurt alluded to this, I think, it looks like you're shoving all the wetlands into the open space, and all the lot, all the lots will be uplands, and then
Yes.
uh, you'd need a waiver from the board in order to do this, and I don't think we're gonna do that.
No, I think, if, if we meet the calculations in your rules, then we're fine, and that's what our intent is.
Yeah, but you're not meeting.
I, I think we are, but I'll get the calculations.
Well, how can you, you're shoving all the wetlands into the, into the open space.
That's where I don't wanna digress, to, that's where...
Well, but this is an important issue, and they need to understand.
It is an important issue, but I'll give you the calculations.
I just wanna say that the percentage of wetlands in the open space cannot exceed the percentage of wetlands in, in, uh, in the non-open space. So, unless we waive that, and, uh, again, it looks like all the wetlands are, are going into the open space.
Well, that's the main...
You know, I just think we need to be on board, that I don't think we're gonna waive that.
But can't they reach out and grab some other ownership here, isn't that what John was alluding to in beginning, that he owns many, many acres on the other side?
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah, this, this is a lot that can be done. The, the other thing I want to raise, though, is, and I know West Ox pasture and the development of that's gonna come up during this, but is there flexibility in meeting standards in the, in the roadway here to lessen the cost of this construction? That money could be put into improvements on West Ox pasture.
Well, we always...
For instance, if we go to LID, you know, eliminate sidewalks, have narrower pavement, that sort of thing. How does that sit with improvements to the town?
We, we try to, like, compromise on that, you know, we have compromised in the past, right, even in West Ox.
Right, well, I think...
Not West Ox, Wild Pastures.
I think, I think the answer is we are flexible on those things, I don't know about eliminating sidewalks, but, uh, but certainly the, the, the width of the street, uh, we don't require, uh, you know, construction according to our rules necessarily. Uh, we do, we do allow more narrow, uh, streets, particularly in an OSRD, and I'm, I'm personally, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Cliff, can they do other than single-family homes in an OSRD?
Yes, yes, they can.
That's tons.
Yeah, without, without a doubt.
Has there been any thought along that line to open up more land with different living forms?
Well, that's calculations you have to do from a financial standpoint.
That's right, it comes and goes, you know, like, at certain times when the economy looks like you're better off doing multi-family, and then it swings to...
I can say that multifamilies in this town sold thirty-five of the, thirty-five, thirty-six, sold within a year, eight months.
To golf course.
Yeah, well, that's a different situation than this.
I know, but, but all I'm saying, how quickly did those multifamilies sell?
No, that's a whole different ballgame.
Oh, they did too, though. Did they? Oh, they're close, right?
What?
Raleigh Village, didn't that...
Yeah, they were on topic, you're doing a golf course.
I don't think they did.
What?
I didn't think Raleigh Village was, was close to being sold out.
No, no. But it's accelerated, it's much better. It's certainly accelerated, though, from what it was, first. And, but, but aside from that, that is something, that is something, that's a good point. The other thing is the calculations, but I mean, this is before contact the planning department, and I think any of, the next meeting should have this stuff provided.
Yeah, yeah, we just, we just wanted to give you the big picture, and I understand...
Issues are pretty clear, I have to defer also, the fire department is a big factor here.
Yeah.
Jim Broderick, he's the one that seriously has to consider the big, the picture of, um, he knows the town, he's been here long enough to know it intimately, and he also knows it in reference to his own equipment. And that's a big thing, we take, you know, he's gotta fend off for this, you know.
I mean, you weigh down, you weigh down these roads, and if you have emergencies, and I don't just mean a turned-over truck, I mean, people being ill or tornadoes, we could possibly have that, so we have to think ahead rather than just
And he's our emergency, yeah.
putting houses down, down a long line, you have to be very creative for people to be able to be safe.
And we have been, even on shared driving, I mean, we have.
There, there should be connections between neighborhoods in the town, you know, so you shouldn't have to drive, if, for example, if you live here and you wanna go to the center of town for anything, you shouldn't have to go through this long drive, or, you know, depth to Route One, and then out to, uh, Weathersfield Street. In other words, if you take a right here, you could just be in Weathersfield Street.
And see even more dangers, the more, are, when you have a bunch of residential coming out into a commercial, especially with the department fee on Route One here, it's dangerous, you know?
I'm glad you're all looking at safety, you know how I am.
Well, it's just, we can't, we have to, we can't, this kind of mixed, we kind of take it into account, I mean, we have certain crossings that are even unimproved without lights, and there have been issues, but that's why we kind of hasn't, we don't mind putting commercial in there, because we try to get the sight lines, and, but, you know, this was kind of a forty-B situation.
Well, yeah, that was starts upon the town.
This is not something that, you know, we designed.
Yeah.
As a planning board, that was our blessing.
No, 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 it wasn't the town's blessing, I think this was basically, you know, forced upon the town.
But it is like half or three-quarter acre parcels.
But it did, I mean, the people, it did turn out to have some benefit, certainly for the people who are trying to move into Raleigh.
But I have a question for John or Philip, I might, is the owner in control of Vinton's Lane from Route One on your, on your concept plan?
Good question.
This one?
On that portion of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they own both sides, they have the interest subject to rights, that's accessible.
Your concept plan has to conform to conventional subdivision, so...
They own both, both sides.
You've got to get Vinton's Lane all the way to Route One, you've gotta have control of it, or be able to develop it.
Because I live on a...
Or to Weathersfield.
Same town.
Uh, 'cause, 'cause Vinton Lane extends to...
All right, so Archie Weathersfield, they're coming the other way, but...
They own the lane too?
Yes.
Yeah, the only spot, isn't there one spot down where it narrows up?
But they didn't own up to Route One, huh?
No, there's, there's two other people on it. I actually had discussions with, uh, town council, G D Pickett, um, a couple of years ago.
I thought you did, yeah.
Yeah, in terms of access, um, and I won't speak for her, but in the discussions that we've had, she felt that we had, uh, clear access rights to Route One, even though we don't own on either side of Route One as you get to the last hundred feet.
On the side of me. And why?
Why do we have act, uh, rights?
I'm scared.
Uh, because it was a discontinued way, and so you own to the center line when you have a roadway that's discontinued, and, but you still have, uh, the rights of access to all along that distance of the roadway.
So, I'm clarifying here, you don't pay taxes on the half of the road, or that piece of the road, but you, you can use it. It, it belongs to you, but it doesn't.
Well, we have rights, it's like, so like easement rights.
Anybody at the end of that road, you know, they, people down here have the right to come through here.
I'm a little confused, why are we talk, why are we talking about ownership of Vinton's Lane?
Because, because you have to, for a concept plan, you have to show conventional subdivision development, so this relies on disconnection or that.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay.
That's right.
I mean, it narrows down, uh, to that portion of Vinton's Lane, I mean, it narrows down to some portions at thirty-three feet.
They wouldn't necessarily have to build it, but they would have to show that...
This is a theoretical...
All right, does the board agree that there should be an interim meeting at some point?
This is the most complicated project we've had, I think, since I've been here.
Really? Well, we kinda knew it was coming.
Yeah, we, we did know.
We know it was coming, because you are...
Not really, though.
Does that, does anybody have a problem with, um, Cliff or Gene or myself, or Larry?
I guess we have two members. I could discuss, make some time available, too, because I'm interested.
Well, I mean, yeah, but it could be two meetings, yeah, it could be two at a time.
Well...
You know?
You, you get it, I mean, that's fine.
But no, I, I think, I would, but I think this is gonna take several. I don't really wanna keep it happening in this forum, because I think having, um, some other town board members who can help guide them, so just straight talk. Would that help you? I mean, so...
I think so.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a great idea to shut other planning board members out of the process.
Well, no, no, it's still gonna have, this is gonna be a long, then no one's gonna be shut out. But I'm just saying, I wanna get a viable plan, I'm not gonna keep doing informal...
I mean, I think it would be appropriate for two of us to, uh, meet with the developer, Larry, and perhaps the fire chief, just to get some, the fire chief's ideas.
And Brent.
Sure.
Yeah.
Other departments' ideas, and then bring it back to the planning board, and have a full-blown discussion of what, you know, what was said in that meeting.
But I don't wanna spin wheels, in terms of, I don't wanna go backwards.
Yeah, the, the, I, I agree with that, um, the other comment I wanted to make is whether we could have some access to town council, because I just wanna make sure that, you know, before we spend hundreds, thousands of dollars on this, that she agrees with our thoughts and opinions in terms of access and so on.
Well, you better get some more concrete questions to Kirk, we'll work with him, in terms of what you want.
The selectmen have to authorize.
Yeah, right. But the more specificity in, in terms of the selectmen and the town administrator making a decision as to, you know, is this in the town's interest?
But we could recommend that, ask the selectmen.
I think it's a great point because otherwise, I don't, I don't want you spending all this money on engineered plans that are just.
And it's an unusual situation if we start submitting peer review funding for, for legal peer review, but I think we'd be willing to do that to get her input and to get her feedback.
Likewise, likewise, you know, at some point.
Town council?
Town council.
Okay. Because there are multiple access issues here that we think we've nailed down. It's just I want to make sure that she, you know, she blesses them before we get into some serious design.
Right, and our planner Kirk has to get permission from the town administrator for that.
So.
In a proposal sense.
Sure.
All right, what's your timeline? In terms of, what do you think, ready with calculations?
Better not say two months.
Ready with calculations in terms of, I mean, I can, we can look at, no, no one's being shut out. She said, I think it's, you know.
Are you talking about the full meeting or just simply a small?
No, the meeting was getting, the fire, the fire.
Yeah.
He won't be back, he won't be back for another couple of weeks or at least a week, two weeks.
Three or four weeks.
And I don't know what our next meeting's going to be, presumably it will be before then. And obviously, if we got to the point, if we got to the point where we needed more time in the agenda, then we could, you know, put more time on.
Sure.
Just for this, you know? All right, what is, Cliff, you're pretty wide open.
I'm wide open.
You want, would you rather look at your schedules and then contact Kirk and have him circle back to me?
Wednesday, September tenth.
I'm just helping coordinate it. I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I don't necessarily even have to be.
We'll double check. We get beyond Labor Day and so on.
Oh, sorry, that's for what, the fire chief meeting?
Yeah, assuming that.
Kirk's coming to be the point, man. I'll help facilitate it, but I don't necessarily have, I don't really have a problem.
That's fine.
Let's make sure we have.
I'm not loving to be the one and then one other. I can be two others.
I mean, this, this is just one point.
I want to look at this closely and I want to talk to Kirk.
Because we also have the commercial zone parcel that's close to Route One, which is a separate discussion as well. Because that's something that we would come in with at some point.
You have this, Kirk?
Yeah, I have, I don't have.
All right, so what did you give us tonight? You gave us the conventional yield plan.
I'm sure Kirk.
That's new from what?
Oh, OSRD.
Just the assessors.
I know.
And a copy of the.
I think I have that on the packet of stuff. That's his Labor Day seventeen. That's the 40B. I like to hold it sensible. All right, Kirk, so you have both of these? Larry, do you have them?
I'm all set.
You want a copy of these?
I have them.
So you're, I'm gonna give you these.
We certainly know that we have a long way to go and, um, Phil's done a lot of these. He's, he's also actually a peer review engineer for a report. I sit over there.
I think after the September ten meeting, we should do a site visit. That would be, seem to be.
That's definitely call us for a site visit or something before it gets too frigid or snows.
That'd be great.
So you want to wait? You want to fix the date now? Or you want to just do it through Kirk?
Probably you should just decide on your schedule, then send me an email and we can start that way because I'll have to coordinate. It really makes no sense until the fire chief gets back.
And we meet on the town?
Right, I mean, that's one of the, definitely would have the fire chief there at the first meeting, right?
Yeah, without a doubt.
So when he gets back, then we can really start.
And I think it's important also, this whole thing with Judy or Mr. Fletcher. I think he's been doing stuff, right? What's his first name?
Steve Westy?
Yeah, he's back.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He wrote that last, yeah.
He wrote the last one. All right, yeah, we'll work with him.
We have to enjoy your stuff.
Keep, keep your thinking cap, keep.
We will.
It is a complicated one.
Yeah, it is. I mean, there are different projects.
Unless you have someone.
Please be positive.
I'm not being negative.
And here someone can spend two billion on a, you know, dysfunctional basketball team. You know, two billion. We're worried about paving a road, you know?
That is with the basketball team, not with Microsoft.
All right, thanks.
Well, great, thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Take care again.
Yeah, nice to see you. Take care.
Nice to see you, John. You have these?
I have one.
You want the cones? You have, everybody's gene. I'm just trying to get the people.
The concept part?
This is the, I'm just trying to get the people with the most OSRD experience to get on this, you know?
No, I've.
And you can ask.
I've, I've known this was coming for about twenty years.
As soon as they bought it, they developed it. It's up to now. They kind of just come around to the point where it's more viable to do it.
It's interesting that we think that multi-families wouldn't sell on a hot market or they, is the perception is they sell better in a, in a tighter market or?
I disagree with that whole philosophy.
I mean, it seems like.
Let's not play, let's follow the agenda and not play real estate.
We're doing planning.
It is true. I, I was shocked that you think it's going to be in and out over a year.
It's also relevant to the. Yeah, I mean, there's, but that's a different field.
You get differently. They're pretty high quality.
Well, they are, but, you know, I don't know if that's the distinction.
Shared to, it's the open space.
Well, but that's what they want to have. That's all sightlines.
If you can pull everything in, then you've got more land that's free and clear. It's just four, five hundred thousand dollars.
He just doesn't want, occupying twelve acres or something close to it.
It's still pretty good.
Right, he can put.
Right, but that raises another question. Does there, oh, is I hate.
Attempt to preserve the ratio of parts.
He moves it all over on the other one side.
Not to transfer. This paper's the one that says if you've got twenty acres, you've got the other one that's supportive. Yeah, twenty, you can put your twenty units on ten acres as long as you keep your other ten acres open. That's roughly.
The only issue you might have is a system.
You could only do that on a.
All right, all right, the entry letter's over. We have, back to 104 Newbury Port Turnpike. Mr. Bernhardt, is he here?
I don't think he's here.
In some background, it's pretty self-evident in not only Kirk's notes, but also in the exhibit. But I think we'll just wait on, you know, there's a potential for a business to open up a business on Route One at 104 Newbury Port Turnpike. I'd like to read about that. It'd be a dog kennel. It would be a dog kennel.
Yeah, it would be a dog kennel.
You want to say anything more about it or just leave it for me?
The only thing about this Road Four Newbury Port Turnpike, it's a business-like industrial, which is the only zoning district that the kennels are allowed in. So he's actually, he said that he had been before the board last year. He's, he owns a, the business is called Hydrant Regency.
Oh, yeah.
And I think he was before you last year and he was, he was losing his current location. He's, he's having to scramble to find a new location. So he's been having some trouble, but he's found this, this parcel and he's looking to put a, you know, build a building there to have a dog.
Is there a building there?
There is a building which he's going to use, but he's going to have to put the, you know, the area.
Kennels and all this.
Yeah, kennels.
I don't recall that, that we met with him. Maybe I missed the meeting. I don't know.
It was, the new one is Grenier.
I know that someone was going to put a dog kennel or something at the top of Combs Edge, you know, they were going to put some kind of.
Ipswich Animal Hospital wanted to know. Was that Ipswich Animal Hospital?
It's gives me about.
The water lines.
Yeah. Paying too much attention at these meets.
I don't recall the other meeting.
I don't, I don't remember either.
I've talked to the building inspector about it a little bit, but I just wasn't allowed to the other place. So I feel I hopefully it just will work out, but I need, we need the details maybe.
Well, as well.
It's right behind Bay State Auto Sales.
Yeah.
Is that where the, or Bay State?
Is that where it is?
It's right in.
Pretty sure, yeah, right.
It's between that.
Gino, you on the agenda?
Yeah, next.
Oh, David. All right, any other questions about, well, guess what, I thought, so you didn't know he wasn't coming?
No, no, I.
I was in here a couple of months ago for Savory's place.
Oh, great. There's somebody one there.
That's how you get an access place.
There's a, the girl who passed Savory's has a dog kennel.
Right.
All right, um, we have a planning board member who is representing a business owner, so.
I'm recusing myself.
No, can you formulate a procedure and why?
Because I'm representing that law.
Well, okay, but give a little more detail for the.
A planning board member, I'm representing a client.
David, I'll switch over to your side now.
Do you not see it? This is very preliminary.
David, Jake, with this, we're recusing himself.
We've been before the board.
Making any comments as a planning board.
We have no copies for anybody, but this is preliminary, preliminary anyway. Gino's building, it's the same site that we were working with before. Gino has a long skinny building. I know some of the cars and numbers have been there, but it's an auto trail, RV rental, auto repair, and Gino's auto body. And then there's an open, big open space out back here and it's the town of Raleigh. And we're proposing a ten thou, approximately a ten thousand square foot footprint for general storage with three levels in it. Be a combination of metal and some other materials similar to what we proposed before. Landscaping.
This is a proposed building here?
Right, yeah.
What, what's the date on this plan?
This goes back to two thousand and five, I believe.
That's what I thought.
Two thousand and nine.
So it hasn't been modified in any way?
Well, it will be modified. We're just using this as a talking, talking point.
How can you use that as a talking point if it's going to be modified?
Well, we're going to have a ten thousand square foot building.
But I bet, same footprint?
Yeah.
Same parking?
Similar.
Same drainage?
Similar.
Same septic?
Yes.
Septic's already in.
The septic's already.
I see something in the back there.
That's a cul-de-sac drainage system.
The cul-de-sac? Do you have, supposed to be attached to, are you going to pave the place? You don't have much pavement there now, really, in relationships here.
I wasn't looking for pavement, no.
You're not gonna.
Maybe a little bit in the front.
So you're not going to change the paving, though? You're just going to leave things away there. So therefore, you're only going to capture, but then, what are the cul-de-sacs? Are they off the roof?
Yeah.
But you're not going to do any drainage in the lot?
We, in this scheme, we have.
Right now, all your drainage goes what? Into the woods?
Yeah. We may have to do drainage, I don't know.
Just asking, because this is the type of, if you're going to, if you've got contractors then doing stuff, it's cheaper to do it then.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
All right, so I, I don't know.
We'll have an office in it.
How high is it? Three levels? What kind of roof? Flat roof or?
Very low pitch.
Just obviously a pitch, just to get rid of water.
Just give it the water, the stone, all that, yeah, just whatever.
Metal roof? Antilocking?
Metal roof.
You mentioned landscaping? What's that kind of?
There will be landscaping, yes. I know somebody who's just got a master's degree in landscape architecture.
Oh, yeah? How convenient.
It's so far off the road. Wouldn't it be nicer to landscape near Route One? Because you own everything.
Well, this is a thirty-five foot tall steel building, so.
There'll be landscaping that would hide a good, well, his building will hide a portion of it and then this area was.
Pretty high building.
That's what I was saying.
See if I can get, no, no offices. See if I can get a three-story building, you know, using a freight elevator.
Racking system, like a rack car?
Rack or just driving them up, just parking them up. You're using a freight elevator, bringing them up.
You're going to clean, you're trying to get more cars inside and less on the lot?
Correct, correct.
And there'll be some general.
So it's an overall benefit to the visual.
Well, inside storage is more desirable, you know, everybody goes outside storage, you know, temperature control.
There are people who are storing antique cars.
Also, also people store their antique cars.
This is an additional business concept to you.
Yeah, not a showroom, just to store.
No, 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 just.
They store them down at Tuxville Fairgrounds, but they get very dusty and dirty.
And these are like ventures, I mean, to. People who restore Camaro, blah, blah, blah. And you do some of the restorations.
Right, so, so they sort of go together.
Yeah, I mean, I think landscaping is important because you need to, need to buffer this.
Gino's recognized that certainly that the landscaping.
There's a lot of trees right there. You're not going to see much from Route One anyhow.
Yeah, maybe not.
But we'll reinforce.
I would just like to see.
Are you doing anything, or considering doing it to improve the appearance of the existing location?
We could talk about landscaping out at the street. I mean, I think that in this whole zone that needs to be, that's where the design should go.
What happened to next door? He's just selling cars and going on, and going on with his life.
Yeah.
And built a couple of things in the building and that's it. Yeah, this is probably more geared at heart.
I agree with you that if we can put some of the emphasis on Route One and, and the, you know, the.
I'll bet nobody will see this too far away. You're right.
Right, so.
And, you know, we have to do some signage out there because you're not going to see the signage way back here.
Right, I mean.
And since this is storage, you don't need a lot of parking, is that right there?
Yeah, it's reduced for the use, yeah.
I, I don't really have a problem with improving the lot.
We'll go into just preliminary design and then we come back and see it before.
I mean, do you have to go in front of CONCON?
I don't believe so, but I think.
Is there any wetlands back there?
Way back.
Well, you're showing a lot of parking spaces. What are those spaces for?
Some of those are going to go away.
Some of them are going to go away, yeah.
I mean, just make.
See, sometimes, if you're doing general storage, you have to stop your car and take whatever you're going to store out. You have an elevator.
Does this have, does this have loading base? Or how, sixteen, what are the door heights?
Well, just, no, ten-foot height, that's it. I'm trying to get three stories in there.
But, so your, your door heights are just your.
Yeah, just the regular, just to drive cars in.
Just ten-foot overhead doors?
Well, the bottom level, I want to drive in cars, the whole, all the way around. You know, you pull in, you're going to have a little door, you drive your car right in. Second story, you move the car by elevator. Third story, you do the same thing.
There's a demand for this in Raleigh or in the city?
There's quite a bit of demand, yeah.
Parking at Tuxville Fairgrounds and they're complaining about dust.
We've got motorcycles, cars.
No, indoor storage is huge.
Because it is private collectors, you know, they can have.
You can afford a private collection, you can afford to.
To store the climate control, the.
It improves a lot. Does anybody have any other issues here?
No.
Do you have any issues that you find in?
I mean, obviously, I saw the drainage issues and all of the.
We'll draw, we'll get it drawn up.
Yeah, you just got to draw up your plan. Does this require full, have to have full site plan?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's it, right?
I think it requires a special permit.
For what?
For the considering size of the building.
Really? Both site plan, well, special permit and site plan.
There's no, you do it the same. I would sign, any additional signage?
On Route One, you ask them to go outside. Take that into account. Where were they? On Route One? What are you going to change and what are you going to call it? Or I'll be able to say, whatever.
Oh, David, how, how did we, when we were looking, we were talking before about how to categorize it as.
I was calling it general storage.
General storage, yeah.
We do have a percentage of total lot coverage that we have to watch.
Without a doubt.
Yeah. But we want, because of issues before on the little building over on this lot over here. We wanted to start out early. We did not want to get, we got into some issues with the voting department and so on.
Well, yeah, because you didn't meet the, you had some ratio issues there, right?
To me.
Well, don't matter, you still. You got to run into the same ones here? You're going to run into the same ones here?
No.
I hope.
No.
Have you done the calculations?
They've, they've been done through them.
But how? Can you, can you use, is this still all one lot, you?
This is all one.
Yeah, one lot, right behind Gino's all one.
Most of it is gravel parking area, right?
Yeah, but it's already filled with stuffs, so can you, can you use that? It's mostly impervious now. It's not impervious. I mean, it's mostly pervious.
Right, so it's gravel, gravel parking.
I mean, I'd prefer if you can throw some drainage. I mean, it would help.
Well, we had it in this proposal, but I think, I think by the time you get done with it, you.
I mean, roof drainage is clean and that's really not, you spent all this money on cul-de-sacs for clean drainage, that's like absurd.
Yeah.
Whereas this site needs some, you know, hooded, you know, some catch basins that have oil-water separators and, I mean, it just needs regular drainage. You know, and you spend, this is, you know, these cul-de-sac units are not cheap. And as a roof drainage, you know.
It's not just a good idea, Stavall.
I know, but it's just, it's too bad. I'd rather see, to get a little more practical about a site that, luckily have sandy soils and by the time it goes, you know.
Yeah, it'll fill this right up. The biggest question that I have for the board is, are we allowed to put a three-story building?
As long as it's under the thirty-five feet.
I think that's right.
What's the dimension on this?
footprint, ten thousand square feet.
It's a hundred and forty feet long and seventy-two feet wide.
Seventy-two by one forty?
This building, there you have, it's ten thousand square.
Oh, it's not about the lot, the lot's, all the building itself.
One, one forty, seventy-two?
By thirty-five.
Uh, no, this is a conforming, yeah.
What's total acreage? Ten acres?
No, three.
Three?
Double deal impossible.
About three and a half.
I mean, from here.
Three and a half acres.
Well, but I don't know about the, the floors. Can you remember what section I just said?
Oh, in terms of.
The height limit section.
So the total height is thirty-three.
Oh, the elevator will work? Drive your car right in, just put the height in.
Thirty-four foot.
And what about the first floor?
Same thing, you start, it's got a safety, then those doors, doors go open.
And then what, doors that you drive to your spot?
You need a level to space for the ground, then you can go left and right, whatever you want.
Okay.
And the elevator, it's the middle of the building, and then from there you can go up whatever you want.
No more than twelve.[1789.13]
You can drive, you can push, you can do whatever you want.
Four, which is.
Temperature control, you know, the top level, I was.
Does the elevator shaft go higher than the?
So you use an elevator.
Not a elevator.
Yeah, it's just like a, a lift that keeps going.
Well, the, um.
Lock it, and then show stuff. Alright, Steve, the, the bylaw says the height of any structure shall not exceed thirty-five feet or two and one-half stories.
But I, I, is what you're proposing really three, three separate stories, or, I mean?
Two and a half, what's the height?
It's open sides, or so. Doesn't describe by half-story, that's the problem.
I mean, I think that's a question of interpretation for the building inspector.
It will not be over thirty-five.
I mean, I don't know, these are, these are conventional floors, are they?
Cause part of it can be two, and then if it's open and not totally closed, it's like the half, you know.
Yeah.
Cause part of it's gonna be open, right?
Well, the third one's gonna be totally open, that's.
The third one, but is it gonna be any connection opening to the second one?
To the elevator?
Elevator stairs, we're gonna have an elevator plus stairs.
That's a, that's a.
Well, we can talk to Ken.
Well, you definitely need to talk to Ken.
But that's the key here, you know.
The bylaw is a three-story building, but not as a two-story.
No, I agree with it, it gives, gives you that extra storage space.
Of course, yeah, it makes it worthwhile to do.
Put the investment.
I mean, if you do it two and a half, what you're saying is that the third floor is less than, less than the second.
Right.
Well, if it's a pitch roof like this, so it's gonna be a little bit less on the sides, but it becomes higher in the middle.
To me, as, as long as it meets the.
That's two and a half, I'm not.
Yeah.
What did he say the height requirement?
Thirty-five.
Twenty-five?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Four, so, but it's.
Well, the story is what, ten feet, right?
Yeah, what else is it, thirty-five feet, it's less than that.
If it was two and a half stories, but forty feet, would we allow it?
No.
So it has to be both those things.
Shall not exceed thirty-five feet or two and a half stories.
So it sounds like you can't do three stories?
No, you can't.
Okay, so the third floor has to be less than the second floor?
Well, I have this question of how you define that, yeah, but.
Whoa, you said thirty-five feet, though, didn't you?
That's what we're getting at, though, is, uh, thirty-five is okay, if it was thirty-six feet, it's not a.
But it's only going, thirty-five comes to your house or anything, yeah.
Your ten, 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 it's more than enough.
That gives him five feet more to play with, actually.
You could configure it sexually to make it like a half, half a floor there.
Half a floor, yeah, right, but you can't have a full ten thousand square feet on the third floor, it sounds like.
Each story shall be deemed to be the portion of a building between the upper surface of any floor and the upper surface of any floor next above, having more than one half of its height above the average elevation to the finished grade.
Would you be able to get, I mean, you're, you're talking about jet cars up there and then maneuvering them around, if you had less than ten thousand square feet up there, would you still be able to maneuver the cars in a way that?
Yeah, you could, you should have.
You could, and, and the height on the third level, I mean, normal, the average car is no more than five feet high, and if you put a van up there that is six feet tall, which.
Or motorcycles.
Yes, yeah.
You can be.
That's some general storage.
You can be ten, ten, and six, or seven. You may, you may have to find that out and then reduce the height.
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to reduce the height.
Not reduce the height, but just, just kind of reduce the size of the floor.
Reduce the size of the floor.
Yeah, just kind of reconfigure this.
But you're right, that, I mean, how you define a half-story is an interesting.
Well, it's, it's partially defined there, but.
The next thing, you clip this red.
Yeah.
Try and understand that.
To be honest, I didn't get it right away.
Uh, no.
Good answer.
Well, just get that clarified, that's not what we can do.
Are you under the twenty-five percent building coverage?
We will be.
And you're under fifty percent block coverage?
Yeah.
Alright, just list those criteria, and make sure.
So the building inspector has to.
Yeah, yeah, he's a zoning enforcement officer, not, not the planning board.
Okay, so we have to start with the can.
Yeah.
But we certainly can take a plan, you know, that's submitted according to the rules and regs with drainage, and we can approve, we can approve a plan.
Yeah.
We take the plan and approve it.
We've got enough to go on.
But the idea is to get a plan that's approval right off the bat, so you don't just keep coming in with the.
Exactly right, that's what I'm talking about, yeah, yeah, and see if it's, if it's a ball.
It's not a moving target.
David knows it, though.
He did.
Alright, thanks, go on.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
I'm gonna go back to the other side of the table, and I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Alright, Kirk, this is your show now, real quickly, except for, I'm gonna switch to a D.
Yeah.
Cause I just wanna get a vote here to get a formal action to.
I'm back.
David Jankwood, at such, such a time, we're talking about, about nine, ten of nine, if there's no longer a D. Why don't you explain what the town, uh, select have suggested, and, and we, we brought this up before, remember that he was gonna be the limited, uh, lighting enforcement agent, Kirk Baker was? We needed a formal vote, so here it is, but you wanna describe what your duties are?
Well, I guess, uh, just, uh, previously, the board was select that had been the special permit granting agent for special permits, uh, illuminated signs, and as a result, Frank March Gianni, in the Health Department, that was the actual enforcement agent for the lighting, and he would do all the reviews. And when it came over to the planning board, I think Katrina took it over, uh, at least I think it, with the, the early application.
Kind of an informal thing.
Yeah, or a more informal. Yeah, uh, but they're wanting to make that official, they're wanting to transfer that over fully to the planning boards.
She's more appropriate on the planning board than the Health Department.
Yeah. And I've done those kind of reviews, um, with light, lighting, light plans and.
So you'll be sign enforcement?
Uh, well, sign lighting, illuminated signs.
Do you think that's gonna, uh, infringe it all on your other duties? I mean, does, does it take much time that would, uh?
No, I mean, it's part of the review for these applications.
Anyway, yeah.
Yeah, if we, uh, for exam, example, um, that, you know, we're recently talking about one eleven, a very.
Right.
It's just, the review of that section is going to be part of, uh, is gonna be part of my duty.
Well, somebody's out of code, you turn it over to who?
I'm sorry?
Somebody's out of code, you turn it over to who?
Well, I mean, if, if something needs enforcement action, of course, I would, you know, I would talk to, uh, the zoning, zoning official about that, but.
The building inspector.
The building inspector. But in terms of, uh.
And this helps the building inspector, too, because now he has his handle on it.
I think it's a great idea.
You know, because Kirk is working closely with the building inspector already, so now it's, it's just better coordination.
Would this require more hours, or be built into your already?
It's something I'm gonna be doing anyway, whenever we get these applications for.
Okay, a little more on your plate.
It's already, it's just made, it's more of a technicality of.
There's a lot on the plate.
I know you can handle it, you're a good man.
Thank you.
Alright, can I, can I have a motion to appoint him as limited lighting?
Second?
I think I made that motion, I think I.
Can you wait till he makes the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that we.
My head almost broke, my neck.
That we, uh, appoint Kirk as the illuminated sign enforcement officer.
Is it illuminated sign, or is it all illumination?
Let's see, it actually, there's a.
Illuminated lighting.
With the lighting enforcement agent for.
Oh, it's all illumination, you're right.
I think you wrote that section.
John Pendleton.
By law enforcement.
Wow, that's a tough one.
Can you, um, rephrase that?
I move that we, uh, approve Kirk as the enforcement officer for illuminated, all illuminations in the town, including illuminated signs.
Second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry, I was thinking, so second, but it's slow. All is in favor of that?
Aye, aye.
I can't.
Unanimous, limited lighting enforcement agents, so that can be called lighting. I'm gonna skip down to D.
Good.
We have to set a public hearing date for the site plan review application. Here we are back, well, everybody knows where we are, um, if you don't, you should, because we had a site visit there, Larry was there, and we had some striping of the lot up on the, after Eastern Scientific.
Right.
So, I guess there's.
You're gonna have to put a can of spray paint and put the stripes on, or?
As, uh, he wants to develop up on the hill, so.
He's got a.
So, we're, we're setting a public hearing.
Yeah, the.
Well, we don't have the.
We do have the application, it came in.
I was gonna, uh, cause I had discussed that with you, I said, I'm not setting until I have the applicant, did you review it?
I haven't reviewed, like, the, the, oh, I mean, you mean for content?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's complete.
Yeah.
And what is it for?
I'm sorry?
What is it for?
It's for to build a building, a proposed warehouse, uh, building for landscape contract.
Oh, okay.
I reviewed it in terms of content, to make sure it's a full, some done, and completes the middle, but in terms of actually having reviewed it, it's under review right now, I've, I've forwarded, routed it to the other departments for comment.
Well, we can bring, that's the time, this is.
Well, that's why, it's, it's good that it's coming back before us for site plan review, because we can take.
Sixty-five days is the first lot.
Alright, so that's gonna be, that has to be advertised for sixty-second weeks, um, they only go in on Wednesday, Monday is the app.
Yeah, go in one day.
Um, so, if, you would write that in, and even if it, tomorrow's the, so it could go in on Monday, the, um, the eighteenth?
Monday, uh.
And then it would be in the paper for the twenty-fifth and the first? So I guess we could set it for the tenth, are we meeting on the tenth?
Somebody's meeting for the.
That's gonna be a daytime meeting, right?
Oh, that's a daytime, okay.
What are we doing?
The fire, meeting with fire chief on the other side, do you?
Well, yeah, that was, yeah, perspective, yeah, we don't. That'll, that'll be confirmed, but as far as our next meeting as a board? So Wednesday, right? Wednesday, September tenth?
I'm out of town sixth to the thirteenth.
I think you said that before. That'll be the seventeenth, is that alright?
It's okay.
That's okay.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
So September seventeenth?
Beautiful.
Cause I would like you here tonight.
I'd love to be here with that.
Okay, so what planning board means that, tell Mr. Sany that?
Didn't know he was coming back.
Cause that's within our sixty, so.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So that means you, you know, just make sure you get it in, that means, obviously, you know, a little alley gag on it, but if, just by chance, it didn't go into the twenty-fifth, because of all the other stuff you did, so be it.
Yeah. Yeah, as soon as I got the word, I'm gonna start getting everything ready for.
And you can put, since that's the first thing, it can be seven-thirty?
Yeah, yeah, seven-thirty.
Alright, um, that, that, um, Wilson Pond? Are we done with this?
Wilson Pond is, uh, I did check that out, let me know. That, I, I, I looked at it in regards to the definitive subdivision plan, and made sure that the lots one, uh, through twenty-eight correspond to, uh, you know, what's all the definitive plan, and it, and it does, and I actually have here.
Here, yes, it is.
Randy knows, it sounds like, uh, only those twenty-eight lots and no other lots but Wilson Pond, so this lot, if the request, that's requesting the, uh, Form J.
Yeah.
Clearly falls within it, but are we, at this point, approving that single lot, or the entire twenty-eight lots?
All lots, uh, and.
You noticed that last time, so, so what do you think?
I think it's, I think it's time, it sounds like we did it once, uh.
Everybody wants to take a look.
You know, I mean, I actually was, I, I, yeah, I think if we have a copy of the, the nineteen eighty, was it nineteen eighty-nine?
Is this your new one you wrote?
Yeah, this is the certificate.
This is the COV that Kirk put together, which they asked for?
Right, this was based on the last motion we screwed up.
Explain, explain why they're, they're doing it again, they didn't record it.
Oh, yeah, okay, they didn't actually record the original Form J that was approved by the planning board, uh, back in November fifteenth, nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, so now there's land from that, uh, it's actually lot, or it's, it's forty-two Wilson Pond Road, which is actually translates to Lot Eight on the definitive subdivision plan. And that, that is undergoing a land transfer right now, and, um, the, the attorney did a title, some title research, and found that this was, he, he, he feels that it's an issue, and wants to clear the title, basically just clean up the title, it's a technicality. You know, so it just turns out that the original Form J was never recorded, I don't know that it's a required.
Explain the Form J.
Uh, the Form J is the release form, when you have a subdivision, uh, that's approved by the board, when, when the planning board actually releases, releases the lots, uh, they're basically releasing it to issue building permits, and then, uh, develop, uh, to, uh, certificate of occupancy, so it kind of clears it for, for that, for that process, but, you know, this, this original Form J, I guess they're looking to make sure all the paperwork has been, you know, is, you know, everything.
The reason we said it wasn't really, uh, I, I, I don't see it as a title issue, it's regulatory, regulate, you know, speaking, uh, from the perspective of regulation, if, if they couldn't build, they, they got the building permit, so the approval was clearly there.
Yeah.
In fact, today I did something similar in a different town, and this was nineteen ninety, ninety-four, lot approval, the office just gave me a copy of what they voted on in nineteen ninety-four, wrote it down to the town clerk, they stamped and detested, and that goes to record.
Yeah.
So I think we're doing something very similar to that with this certificate of vote, we're really just reaffirming what was done in eighty-nine.
And that's the language, actually, I used in writing this, like.
Especially in the back end, in the last paragraph, this document letter shall be notification to the Raleigh Town Clerk, given the current owners of those above cited property, as to the above described action relative to the Wilson Pond subdivision accord soon, again.
I mean, uh, it's a lot for a guy to have to go through to, to sell his house, so it's unfortunate that this, you know, that somebody's taking that perspective on it, because I think this shouldn't hold up, I hope. Do you happen to know what the timeline was, are they an extension at this point?
Uh, no, I think it's, they've got, like, uh, it's actually down to a few weeks.
Okay.
Well, this is why, this is why these need to be recorded.
Yeah, well.
This is why the ZBA, this is why they need to be recorded right away.
Right.
So you make a motion.
I, I haven't seen it, uh, I'm sorry, I guess I did, I saw it in front of them.
Cliff?
What?
Larry, any comments?
No, it's, uh, it goes way, way back, I, I inspected it, this is Ann by DEB, that's Don Bowen, who's now the head of Meridian, he's a big company.
Oh, really?
Don Desmond is.
This is the original Lauren, the first, first time seeing the house.
That's the Form J that was back in nineteen eighty-nine, or that's attached to it, I attached a map of the definitive subdivision, if you wanna see.
And the, the letter has a couple, I think that aren't it, you know, totally correct.
Okay.
Um, in the last paragraph, the last phrase of that letter, uh, you refer to the majority vote necessary to grant site plan approval, so it wouldn't be site plan approval, the subdivision.
Oh, yeah.
And it also, this Jane's name, I'm sorry to say, Jane no longer has, uh, the power to vote on this kind of.
Can we vote subject to those changes?
Yeah. So, and what was the, uh, the site, oh, yeah.
Kirk, see, what happens when you do things at the end of the day?
It's not the rest of the.
I talked to you earlier, Nate, you were working on it.
So, I mean, I'll make a motion.
Three o'clock.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, authorize, that, that we reaffirm the release of, uh, the Form J as described in this letter, with the
I'll make a motion that we, uh, authorize, that, that we reaffirm the release of, uh, the Form J as described in this letter with the subject to the, of those two changes being made to the lot.
And you.
I said it in motion.
You familiar with those changes? Board member?
Yes.
Where you vote?
I'm sorry, who did the second?
I said, you said.
I can, Chris Thornton.
Nothing personal, Jane.
No, I can say what I want, I don't have to vote.
Do what happened here.
Isn't that cool? Alright, now.
Cause I'm on vacation.
Have you had anything done?
Chris used to do that.
All's in favor?
That's right, no, I, I. I, I used to say aye, just, just so I, uh.
Why did everybody say aye?
I used to ask Cliff, can I vote on it?
Thank you for catching me.
The, the board, car, car with Terry and I, I guess.
It's been a while, isn't it, anybody else?
That's true. Pickle iron. I don't have a word. But I was here for this.
You're an eighteenth.
You're our sixth member, you can't.
I'm here with this, an eighty.
Well, it is, it's a good one, vote. This, this was handed out tonight, this was not something that came with the original.
Oh, okay.
Alright.
Oh, I just handed, uh, would you like a snack?
Um, you want a copy of this?
Can, can you give, I, I made the change.
You have a copy, Steve would like one.
Nope.
Yeah, can you give more of this, I, I made the changes, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure.
I keep on my record, so, alright, I only need one. Yeah, keep the paperwork down to a middle. Alright, we need to, um, the ZBA has taken up two issues, one is, uh, pretty straightforward. They basically want our formal input on two applications for permits, one is for, and I think if you read, uh, Kirk's, Kirk's, um, comments, his analyses, they're fairly solid, they're fairly extensively researched. And the pool is the first one, I think that's an issue that I think the ZBA, Kirk brought up, the, and the fact that, you know, it, it's too, too close to the property line, but that's why they're going to the ZBA. And he also brought up the point where you can, that differentiation between that, it's, in a variance, they could use the hardship issues where they're not asking for a variance, they're asking for a permit to put in the pool, special permit for the pool.
Well, it's kind of like a variance, but it's not clear what it is, actually.
That's what I'm saying, kind of saying, to, to have the quiet, to have the enjoyment of your property, uh, and having a hardship saying that the pool can only be located in this particular location uh, for reasons of, uh, previously built septic system, topography, et cetera, et cetera, that makes sense. But I think Kirk, you know, making sure that his comments to the board, I mean, I guess what I'm asking, you see his analysis, can he translate that into a letter? Does it put the board members having any trouble with that?
What, I'm sorry, what is your analysis, I, I read it, but, uh.
Well, just in terms, it's questions, yeah, the questions that you raise, does it, the criteria that it fits in terms of, uh, the neighbor is okay with it.
Were you talking about the pool, now?
The pool, I haven't got to.
Is it derogate from public, good?
Yeah, right.
Topography?
Yeah, I guess the criteria, cause it's actually, it's, it's a special permit review, rather than a variance review, uh, that, that's what it's.
That's how it's applied for.
Yeah, that's how it's applied for. Um, but I was just telling them that, you know, the, it would be, it's, it's, there's a site setback of fifteen feet, uh, the pool is within, is seven feet from the property line. Uh, the person who probably have the most to say about it would be the neighbor to the east. Uh, it's gonna be a.
Well, I brought up the point, it might be a neighbor that leaves this week, then they have a new neighbor who might not think it's such a good idea.
But at least they'd have the benefit of deciding whether they wanted to come.
Well, the board. And I agree, I think just the neighbors can keep.
Well, you, well.
Why isn't it a variance?
Well, I, that's the point I was, I, I guess you could make it, it could be applied as a variance.
It, it's unclear, cause this is in all provision, the bylaw, it's been on the books for a long time, but it basically says that, um, nothing shall be built within fifteen feet of a lot line, except with the permission of the Board of Appeals, which, which will take into consideration the alignment of, of existing adjacent structures. So this provision seems to give the Board of Appeals the authority to, uh, to waive the, the setback requirement, uh, no matter what, and just consider the, but I think our town council, I mean, there's history of this. I think town council at one point said that this is probably illegal unless the board, uh, issues a special, holds a public hearing and issues a special permit, so I think that's what, why we're at this point, so.
Yeah, it's this.
Which I would rather see it like that because there have been disputes where things get built right to the property line without any review.
Yeah, right, right, but soon, now they all.
Over and over again.
The only thing I was making the point was that if we might have memo that, to recommend that the ZBA be cognizant, uh, that it is a public hearing and you should be, uh, take, you know, uh, be aware of that, if that proprietor shows up, you should be, uh, you know, receptive to, uh, to what they, their concerns and then to amending.
I totally agree with that.
So I just put, I just put out there that, you know, scre, sometimes screening might be an option, you may want to keep that in mind.
Is it a phone round?
Do anything.
Yes.
But, but Kirk, I, I think you said that this is not subject to the variance criteria, but it is subject to the special permit criteria?
Special permit, yeah.
At seven point eight, you said?
Well, you can't make that determination because they submitted an application that didn't even have the topographical information on it.
Right, well, we pointed that out.
Yeah.
It's, you know, I'm just curious why the ZBA's even asking us to, for our input.
Right.
You're asking, they're, you know, all the things you're suggesting are, are exactly what they should be doing, but isn't, isn't that what they're supposed to be considering on their own?
But because they're asking for planning board input, I'm gonna be there.
But anytime, it actually, I think in.
Because they are.
Alright, well, I'm just, uh.
Well, actually, it's Massachusetts, incidentally, I believe it's in Massachusetts law, or at least in the bylaw, that when a special permit application was received, that whoever the special permit granting agency is, will send it out to CONCON, Water Health, and ZBA, and planning board for comment. So I think it's actually stipulated in either the bylaw, maybe in, in the Massachusetts law.
I'm just wondering if, if our comments shouldn't just relate to our, uh.
No, no, they relate to us as a planning board.
Okay, so not just to the thing, where just crossing our, uh.
In terms of all this, all this owner.
No, I think, I thought all this, all this.
But I mean, he's, he's.
That was a right on point, but we're trying to kind of like.
Convert those to.
Alright.
Get things to move in our direction.
You want to vote yet now?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we approve that draft letter.
Second. That's Kirk's, yeah, you're right, and they're non-binding.
Yeah, just recommend it, yeah, observations, but it's truly, um, it's, it's relevant.
Alright, this is a little more of a sticky wicket, in terms of, uh, these.
And this is more so because.
Well, in the sense that, uh, it goes pretty far back, what, to ninety-one?
Yeah, yeah.
No, ninety-one, I guess the, uh, special permit granting authority for, uh, this site, which was Zone Central.
Even that was a modification, actually.
And it wasn't Zone Central then, no?
Oh, I think.
Doesn't matter, well, what it is, that was a modification of a, this site has been used for boat storage, um, for quite a few years now.
It was a non-conforming use, so the, the approach is a non-expansion of a non-conforming use.
I think, I think the original applicant, um, was confused, well, maybe it, this kind of, this is, this is irrelevant, but I think intended it all, I mean, not just to store boats, but also have the capacity to, uh, flip them or sell them. If someone came in and said, well, I wanted to buy this boat, and I'd say, okay, I'll buy the boat. So, but, obviously, that is not in the bylaws, so, uh, boat sales are not prohibited in this, uh, parcel, at this parcel. A complaint was received, so the zoning enforcement officer acted upon the complaint, and it's before us to, uh, kind of, so then, of course, the applicant would want to go and make sure that what they're doing is allowed. He would go back before the ZBA to amend whatever they got before in ninety-one.
So they're basically trying to modify that special permit.
Which they've already been doing since ninety-one.
Yeah, to include a use that was actually explicitly prohibited in that special permit, and is also, incidentally, not permitted at all by the bylaw.
Right, so, but, but they have a non, they have a non-conforming use for a long time to store boats.
Yeah.
And the Board of Appeals approved that way back.
Yeah.
Um, our, our bylaw says, uh, that you can expand a non-conforming use, to, section five two one says, except as provided by section five two two, the Board of Appeals may expand a non-conforming use or, uh, approve a change of a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, if certain criteria are, are met. Um, here, it seems like they're not, they want to add a non-conforming use, they want to add boat sales, so they're not really expanding it or changing it, they want.
Which is like, yeah.
They want this brand-new conforming use, but even if you, you've put aside that issue.
Because districts change, this allows someone to do another non-conforming use in a district that prohibited it after it changed.
Right, but, even if you call this a change of a non-conforming use, if you go down to five two two, um, it says you can't change, that, that the ability to change a non-conforming use is subject to the following limitations. And one of those is, a non-conforming use may not be changed to the following uses, uh, one of which is the sale of mo, of motor vehicles, so. So even if you view this as an application to change, uh, to, uh, a different non-conforming use, that being the sale of motor vehicles, it can't be done under the bylaw, cause that's prohibited.
But they've already done.
Right.
Well, this, this is a intervening change in the bylaw, this wasn't on the books when the, the Board of Appeals originally, originally, and David is familiar with this, remember David, remember that meeting?
Remember, remember the stingrays? Got the central district still, one A?
Well, I'm just saying what the bylaw says, right, you know.
Okay, I'm just saying this personally, because that was sale and repair of, uh, next to barbecue?
Yeah, well.
But if that was already a non-conforming use, and then someone came in and did, and did precisely that, they started selling car.
Well, but all we can say is what the bylaw says, I mean, what the.
I agree, unfortunately.
And it seems like the bylaw says, if, just repeating what you just said, you can't, you can't change a, 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 a special, uh, a special permit to, to, to sales.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, but specifically, you can't change it to auto sales, and there's no provisions for boat sales. And I was kind of hung up on the definition of what a motor vehicle is.
Well, here, it, it specifically says you can't change it to boat sales.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, okay, well, then.
But I brought up.
Sales of motor vehicles or motor boats.
Motor boats, well, okay, gotcha.
I brought that other situation up because it's questionable, that means how will the, the ZBA, based on history of the site and so forth, how, how will they deal with this?
I, I don't think we get into that, I just think we say, this is what the bylaw provides, you know.
And that's what I wanted to say.
I agree with you.
That's where I think you're now, I think both, what you've said tonight, which is good, I'm glad, glad we discussed it, cause, uh, you seem to be expanding on your.
Yeah.
But that's the primary problem, I think, and I'm not sure what your letter says, but that's the thing.
Yeah.
Well, because you said the same, you said site for, site said central establishments for sale, storage, service, or repair of motor vehicles, but what he didn't bring up was, you had kind of clarified, you know, their authority, which has been used, you know, hundreds of times, or, 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 one non-conforming use to another, you know?
This is a fairly new provision.
But, you know, in terms of the, uh, them allowing, you know, one non-conforming use to change to another, they've been doing that for years.
Oh, yeah, but you, generally, you can do that, but you can't change it to sales of motor boats.
Right, isn't it? Especially, which makes sense in that district.
Well.
I don't know, I mean, that's what the bylaw says, so, I mean, it's, it's in black.
Well, I think they were trying to get a central district then.
They should have known what it was, right?
Oh, yeah, buts of property that is sale of.
They should have known what it was, I'm surprised it got this far.
Yeah, that's true.
They knew what it was.
When was this, David, maybe about ten years ago?
I know the stipulations were raised before my turn.
But certainly is newer, and certainly this was put in since these people.
When we met with the ZBA?
But let's make it clear, this has been used for this use.
In the hallway. This is that stores lot off of, uh, one thirty-three.
Make it clear that this owner has, this, this use has been ongoing, so it's kind of interesting to me to get a complaint since nine.
At this point, yeah.
It's, it precedes ninety-one.
Well, because that house is for sale, that's why.
It's, there's a statute of limitations on these things, so maybe it's, it's beyond the statute of limitations.
It's six years, I think. So, so it's a grant, the fact that he has been using it, uh, expanded use for more than six years.
No one complains about it for a certain period of time, then it, it sort of becomes vested, that's, I, I believe that's the.
You wanna look into that?
Problem, and, you know, when I'm doing variance.
Alright, so I'm just, I think we, you know, we just state the facts, and that's it.
It's interesting, because what we're talking about is, I mean, at least the way Crowley's using it, it's boat storage, and he's throwing a couple of signs on it, he's not running a retail outlet down there, and that's not what he's looking to do. But I guess that's not what, but then unless he's selling boats.
I don't know how you can store boats without not having.
Well, I think what we can do is regurgitate, regurgitate the statement.
That's all we do, that's all, we, we don't find the facts, we don't get into the, you know, right, when someone did something.
This is the applicable standard you can apply.
We don't talk for what someone's been doing on their lot, if we don't know what we're talking about.
Right, he can make that argument.
Yeah.
Kirk, I know there, I mean, I think there's a statute of limitations in the Mass General laws.
Okay.
Under, I'm not sure what section it would be.
But it may come back, so just to let you know.
Well, I don't know.
In some manner or form.
If you got it, I'd like to hear it. Yeah, I can, I can look it up, um, uh.
I didn't know that one.
I just, you know, I'm not, particularly as it relates to, you know, special uses, uh, I don't know, I know the grandfathering.
I do present, I do presentations, if something predates zone.
Right, Kirk, do you have anything to add?
Right.
You have anything to add?
Uh, no, I just.
From the Billy Inspector kind of.
It's not adopted a zone ordinance, and that's, uh, that's, that's.
Did you add anything to that? Relevant to this discussion?
Because, you know, right, they're all sitting on.
I mean, I don't think we should get into how long, you know.
No, no, it's a.
It's an argument to make.
But I just want to let know that it had come to attention because Billy Inspector doing his job with the complaint.
Yeah, I mean, to the most, I think we point out that there is a statute of limitations for this.
Um, any planner updates?
Um. Nope, no, there's, um, when everybody got the, uh, thing about the, uh, three seventy-five, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Where do we get our t-shirts and hats, it's the only thing I didn't, uh.
I haven't got.
I didn't get anything on t-shirts.
Kind of, along with planner updates, Larry, this, um.
Um, Raleigh Pharmacy.
They want you to.
Kirk, just board members, Kirk requested that you, uh, looked at, um, you know, Silver, what's it called again? Silver's property, the convenience store and all the work that they did with.
Yeah, yeah.
Handicaps, do you have anything to say about that, did you get down there?
Oh, you did, I, I wrote a, uh, memo or a letter, about two or three weeks ago.
Uh, let's see, I'll go back and check my email.
Yeah. Send you a, a response on that.
Well, yeah, cause the request was like, um, right out, right out of our meeting last time on the ninth, it's been so long since we met, you know?
Yeah. Um, but my response was, uh, uh, to look at primarily railing or something along the edge of that, uh, walkway.
And what about, and they're finally gonna be landscaping, what's this boulder, this stuff, what are we talking about?
Alright.
Conversations about boulder side.
The boulders along, that was an option that they could do, that was written into the decision, but they, when I went out there, they had the, uh, wood guardrail post in, but the guardrail wasn't up, but the posts were on, it was like thirteen posts, it's still like that right now.
I would think the main concern would be the sprinkler system.
Yeah, that is a.
That's, that's the big, I mean, if something happens over there, it's gonna fall on everybody's lap, fight it, pop it, break it.
That's not a planning board issue.
Well, we have certain, you know, in our permit, you know, periodic visitations, and I just want to make sure we stay on that. So, so we can kind of keep getting our report, this kind of, um, if things break or in lack of compliance or, I just want to make sure the safety issues with lighting, you know, coming into the place, our set parking lot lighting, um, the handicap issues, um, you know, snow storage, anything that has to do with safety or the, you know, the catch basin, that the letter, I guess in compliance with the letter that was voted upon, you know, was six months, the catch basin supposed to be done?
Yeah, I think the board and, and I reviewed the letter that Kirk wrote, that the board approved.
So I make sure we don't forget, that letter is a binding letter, okay, I want to be all over that, that's all.
Yeah.
Cause it seems like the time goes by quickly, all of a sudden, you know, say three months and.
Yeah.
And beyond Scott, I mean, if, if, if the applicants not doing it, and, and we don't give them notice the last day and say, oh, you gotta do it today.
Well, the, the real leverage is actually when they want another occupancy permit, that's how it's, and six months is what triggers it. But if they go beyond six months and they haven't asked for an occupancy permit, it's not, there are no provisions employing it and being like, except telling them, like, listen, you've reached six months, don't come and ask.
No, but they don't ask for it, it's gonna be turnover, there's gonna be some other turnover in that plaza, or else it'll be sold or something.
Yeah, they'll come, yeah, they'll.
Okay, just wondering, alright, so if, we don't have, I don't recall, did we get that memo?
Uh, false, uh.
Yeah, you did, I understand, it's probably right here in this, okay.
I haven't, I didn't read it to this.
I sent you two, one was on that.
Oh, you're talking about.
On, um, uh, the, uh, landscape guy down, down, down River Ice Cream, sent to both at the same time.
Yeah, okay, I got them together, yeah, they, yeah.
I checked my files, but I just, I just want to stay on this stuff.
Yeah.
Um, it seems pretty weird with Down River, I mean, they, they kind of screening, I mean, is that, is that working out? I mean, is the railing, is the railing up yet?
Yep.
On the handicap rent?
Yeah, on Down River, yeah, it was a real.
Are the arrows clear, are the arrows clear, or are people crashing as they go in the entrance to the exit? Is that a landlord issue, or is that her?
You have to be smart enough to be able to follow the arrows.
But are the arrows worn off, are they still, cause that's, could be a date.
Still, still, whatever.
Sunflowers are beautiful.
Yeah.
And how they got them to grow some. I haven't seen many people there eating ice cream, though.
That's the tallest one I've ever seen. Uh, do you have anything to sign?
David does the best ice cream in town.
Okay, uh, Larry, nothing to sign, throw, okay, nothing to sign, minutes please?
Yeah, I gave you a bunch of minutes, this, I read them this morning.
There's three sets of minutes here, uh, April thirtieth, May twenty-eighth, and July ninth. I have to get them out here.
I read them, I thought they were all good, I mean.
Are you serious?
I think I had one, well, oh, wait, it was a typo, it was one typo that I picked up on the floor.
Alright, let me start with, uh, April thirtieth.
Does improvement, was that the?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah.
No, actually, it's not. Uh, he meant to say does improve, he said, I think he said does improve. Wilson Pond, it says, but which was apparently recorded.
Which one, April thirty?
Again, I'm skipping ahead, so we'll start with April thirtieth, no problems, I've got no comments on, I've got no comments on.
You know, which one, what, April?
Uh, it was about Wilson Pond.
No, no.
Can I have a poll on April thirtieth, please? I thought that was.
Make a motion that we approve.
April thirty.
The April thirtieth notes.
I second that motion.
I just, keeping for future, Kurt, we've already been over this on the phone. Please just don't have names like hanging out there. Like you got Larry Graham, engineer, consult, well, review engineer for the town, let's, let's decide on a word that is consistent. Engineer consultant, that's fine, but Kurt Baker, town plan, then Mark Savery, Morris, and Ed are just kind of hanging out there, but, you know.
Where, where is it at?
That's others present.
Oh, oh, okay.
Remember, I, I said that on the agenda, just make sure you attach a name to a.
Yeah, okay.
An association.
Okay.
All right, because someone reading the minutes doesn't know anything with it, you know.
Yeah.
And I know you say it sometimes down below, but people shouldn't have to guess, all right?
Okay.
On it.
I know you put Mark Savery on, so, but owner, you know, consult, I just try to differentiate between a representative with the owner.
Yeah.
Or owner rep or something.
Okay.
Applicant.
Applicant, yeah.
I just had a question on that, the, um, um, April thirty, on the second page of the bottom. It's the second to the, well, the last full paragraph in the last sentence. Graham stated that this was a preliminary suggestion, but stated he thought a small gravel, would that be a parking lot or a facility? I don't know, we're talking about. Maybe I didn't read it right.
Oh, I think it's for stormwater, it's a gravel stormwater facility.
Oh, okay, all right, so.
I'm not sure why I wrote that in my, I, I wrote facility in my notes, probably, but I think I was just talking about a, a stormwater facility.
Okay.
Is the right word facility?
I don't know, what was the project?
No, this was a.
Facility is good, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine. It's really a structure, it's not really a structure.
Facility is pretty broad.
All right, with that amendment, I have a second. David made a motion with changes.
I think I seconded it already.
That was April, April thirtieth?
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, April thirtieth is now approved.
Okay. And there were no changes.
Except for what Jean?
No, that's.
I don't have them, but.
No, Jean, no, Jean's, Jean's right.
Stormwater.
Small stormwater, gravel stormwater facility, she wanted to add the word stormwater in there.
Okay, add stormwater.
Okay, after ground. All right, this is, um, May twenty eighth.
Who we got now?
May twenty eighth. Oh, I was, this is a quick, this is a quick news.
This is the, yeah, I think.
Roman game, I think.
I think that's where the typo is, can I see this, just for a second here?
Okay, let's see.
Tonight, we thought there was going to be.
Don't keep too many client, even client.
We thought there was going to be.
Yeah, right, it turned out to much of a.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's year four, I can't, can't find it.
It's the July ninth, I got one.
You know, instead of the word reiterate, you can say summarize. Summarizes the background of the project.
Where is that at?
That's, uh, second page, first sentence, and the first paragraph. This project has too many iterations.
Can I use it more than one?
No, no.
In my notes on my, I'm saying, but I try not.
It's fine, you can.
I'm trying to make it flow a little bit better.
It's fine, it can be a fancy, but I wanted to flatten it out a bit. All right, motion for twenty eighth.
I'll make the motion approved now.
I'll second that motion.
Clip and press again. All is in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, because I wasn't.
Uh, one abstention, David Jankowicz.
It's not press absent.
July ninth, please.
Kurt, in this discussion regarding Wilson Pond, he said Baker presents situation with previous Form J release for Wilson Pond subdivision, which was granted, but which was apparently recorded by the developer, was apparently not recorded by the developer.
Hell, yeah, you're right. Not recorded, okay.
It's kind of a key change.
Yeah, it is.
That's why I called that one, because it's, it jumped off the table, and then, well, it's, it's recorded, then what the heck are we doing?
Who's just being ironic?
Posits.
It's a skill for a lawyer, a skill.
Yeah, right.
Architects, we look for.
It's a great, yeah, I noticed that, too, Thornton, Thornton posits something.
Posits, huh?
You like, yours positing something.
Just throwing it out there, I'm telling you, I have an opinion about it, consider this.
Do you play a lot of Scrabble?
No, actually.
Discuss.
I try to mix up the words, like. Makes me, or, or. So people.
Oh, makes us sound more.
I'm fine with it.
Makes us sound more intelligent.
Right, really does, it's really.
Makes him sound really intelligent, too.
Amenable.
Yeah.
Says he, amenable, amenable, no, amenable.
Amenable, yeah, it's amenable, not, not amendable.
Kurt, you got to read the sentences, I'll just lay it night, but Bryant states that he would be amendable, amenable.
Amenable.
To the reaffirmation of the original, asked Baker to confirm that the proposed Form J the board is to reaffirm will encompass. Okay, you know, the rest of it is better, okay, once I read the whole thing, okay. That's fine, just with that one change.
Okay, with amendable.
Yeah.
I mean, depending on how you read it, amendable could work. You could change your mind, yeah, I guess so, yeah, but I think it's most likely amendable is the, probably what you meant, but. But you're not wrong, I'll just put posit it, so you're not necessarily wrong.
Too fancy way to stand, do it, you know?
Yeah.
All right, where's that does, where's that verb? Can't find it?
I can't find it, I don't know, it doesn't matter, it's, it's that much.
I'm going to change the content.
No, the context is still what it was saying.
I ain't got to be looking for it.
I need to get a printer and all, so I can print this stuff on, you know, write comments on it, that would make a lot of sense.
I have one, I'll give it to you.
No, I have one, I just sent.
I printed it out, but then forgot to bring it.
That's nothing new.
I'll have to look at yours. All I look for is.
It's right here, I got a week later, he leaves the office, then I can print it, so that in case we have used a couple of resources.
Okay, this is a second sentence, last page. Baker states that the new ramp is located in front of the pizza restaurant, don't capitalize, I was going to put the whole name. Really?
The pizza, yeah, you're right.
That's an insult, they have, they have a better name than that.
At least two pizza restaurants.
Either, either, either put in the small letters or put the whole name.
Okay. It's called what?
Pizza Factory.
Pizza Factory.
I don't know.
I don't know.